Because of COVID-19, social distancing recommendations are meeting tonight is being held virtually through Zoom. Council members, city staff, and myself are all joining remotely. The public is invited to participate by using the instructions included in the city council calendar. This item is located on the front page of the article.org. Public participants will be allowed to make comments through the online chat feature. Please note that your comments will be visible to the entire group. If you wish to make a public comment, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Since we are using Zoom, please be conscientious of speaking slowly and clearly. If I need to confirm something that has been difficult to hear, I will ask for clarifications. We will begin our meeting this evening with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Audrey, would you please call roll?
Bolton House.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Flora.
Here.
Inman.
Here.
Crane.
Here.
Sashmacher.
Here.
And Thomas.
Here.
Thank you.
All right. Item one on our agenda is public hearings, and we do have one public hearing tonight, which is the amendment to the 2020 budget, adopted budget, and this is going to be from Mr. Scott. At this time, I would like to open the public hearing on the 2020 budget amendment. Mr. Scott, would you please provide a brief overview?
Okay, thank you, Mary. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. The state's fiscal year aligns with the calendar year, January 1st to December 31st. The budget for the current fiscal year was adopted by the city council in August 2019, over a year ago. At that time, budget revenues and expenditures were estimated, an estimate based on trends and experience. When the budget was adopted, maximum authorized expenditure amounts were set for each fund. As the actual fiscal year progressed, bids for projects may have come in higher than initially anticipated when the budget was being developed, or opportunities presented themselves that were initially not anticipated. This may at times result in the actual expenditures exceeding the maximum authorized expenditure that was set when the budget was adopted the summer before. Under state law, this will necessitate an amendment to the budget, increasing the maximum authorized expenditure amount for a particular fund. This is the case of the Capital Improvement Fund in the 2020 budget. The bid for Lamar Avenue resurfacing and a striping project exceeded our initial budget for that project. In addition, the city entered into a settlement agreement for the class action lawsuit regarding transportation utility fee. Funds were set aside in the Capital Improvement Fund to pay the claims submitted. For the settlement agreement, any funds remaining, after the submitted claims have been paid out, had to be used for future transportation projects. These two events caused expenditures in this fund for this year to exceed what had been set in the budget document. The maximum budget expenditure authority for the Capital Improvement Fund was set at $2,178,318. I have an extra number in that figure. This budget amendment will increase the amount, maximum amount, to $2,360,000, a difference of $288,682. I'll split that out. This increase can be covered with existing revenue fund debt and the fund balance that already existed in the fund. And with that, I will take any questions or comments.
All right. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak to the 2020 budget amendment? If so, please note that in the chat feature, and we will call on you to speak. Does council have any comments?
Mayor.
Saying no further.
Just one.
Yes, Debbie.
Will we visit this issue under the Finance Administration Committee, and that's where we'll take a vote on the amendment itself?
Correct.
And.
Right.
If approved tonight, we will need to have city council members sign the budget certificate. And like I did this summer with 21 budget, I'll leave those on the table in the lobby of City Hall for some interest.
All right. Saying no further comment or discussion, I will formally close the public hearing on the 2020 budget amendment. The council will consider a resolution to formally amend the budget under the Finance and Administration Committee report from Councilmember Crane. All right. Item two is special presentations. This evening, we do have one special presentation as we recognize the Small Shop Saturday, which will be observed on the Saturday after Thanksgiving, November 28th. This initiative aims to encourage supporting our small businesses during one of the most popular shopping periods of the year. The city of Mission is very fortunate to have a variety of small, independently owned businesses spread throughout our shopping district, including everything from snowboards to specialty roast coffee beans and handmade jewelry. We hope that while you consider that special gift for under your tree, or a yummy treat for your holiday table, that you remember these businesses and their owners that work very hard, not only during the holiday season, but all year to provide products and services that are unique and special as their customers. All right. Moving on to item three, issuance of notes and bonds. We do not have any notes and bonds this evening, so we're going to consent agenda item four. Our consent agenda has five items on it this evening. Our council committees met on November 4th, and we fully discussed each of these items. The committees agree that the items listed on our consent agenda are routine enough to be considered under one single motion. Other items considered by the committees will be presented under committee reports later on in our agenda. If a council member or a member of the public would like any item removed from the consent agenda, they may request that at this time. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Mayor, I move that the city council adopt the consent agenda as printed items four A through four F.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Audrey, please call for the vote.
Sashmacher.
I.
Thomas.
I.
Bolton House.
I.
Davis.
We lost Mr. Davis.
Hi.
Inman.
I.
Crane.
I.
And Flora.
I.
Thank you. Motion carry.
All right. That concludes item four. Moving on to item five, public comments. If any member of the public participating via Zoom would like to make a public comment on items that are not included on this agenda, now would be the time to make that request. Please submit your comments or questions using the chat feature. Remember that your questions are visible to all members of the meeting. All right. Moving on to item six, Action Items Planning Commission. We do not have any items from our planning commission this evening, so we'll move on to item seven, committee reports. Councilmember Crane, would you please provide a committee report from Finance and Administration?
Thank you, Mayor. The Finance and Administration Committee met on November 4th and considered six items, including acceptance of the meeting minutes. The UCS Human Service Fund allocation and Police Department software purchase, along with the insurance renewal and hazard mitigation plan resolution, were all approved under the consent agenda this evening. There is one additional item for consideration on tonight's regular agenda. That would be 7A, Resolution Amending the 2020 Budget. The adopted annual budget establishes the maximum expenditure authority for each fund or taxing authority for that particular fiscal year. Exceeding these expenditures without formally amending the budget is a violation of Kansas budget statutes. State law requires that a public hearing be held when amending the budget. A public hearing was held at the beginning of the city council meeting this evening. The budget amendment will increase the expenditure authority in the 2020 budget for the Capital Improvement Fund from $2,017,318 to $2,306,000, a difference of approximately $288,682. This amendment is not the result of unanticipated or unauthorized expenditures, but rather results from the settlement of a class action lawsuit pertaining to the transportation utility fee. The final settlement was not established until after the 2020 budget had been adopted. The Capital Improvement Fund has excess funds in fund balance that will be used to cover this increase in the expenditure maximum. Therefore, Mayor, I move the city council approve the resolution to amend the maximum expenditure limit for the Capital Improvement Fund in the 2020 budget.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. Audrey, please call for the vote.
Inman.
I.
Flora.
I.
Davis.
I.
Thomas.
I.
Crane.
I.
Bolton House.
I.
And Sashmacher.
I.
Thank you. Motion carry.
That concludes the report, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to Community Development Committee. Councilmember Flora, would you please provide a report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Community Development Committee also met on November 4th and considered four items. These included acceptance of the committee minutes, along with the purchase of a pickup truck for Public Works, which were approved under the consent agenda. There are two additional items for the council's consideration on our regular agenda tonight. First is item 7B, the snow shoveling ordinance. On several occasions over the past year, the councils discussed the city's current policy for shoveling sidewalks after a snowfall. The discussion included concerns regarding students walking to school on unshovelled sidewalks in residential areas, as well as uncleared sidewalks in some commercial locations. The city's current policy, Resolution Number 786, was approved in 2010 and states that owners of property adjacent to public right of way or easement upon which a public sidewalk is located are encouraged to remove snow, ice, and other debris therefrom. Although shoveling is encouraged, this resolution does not specifically require property owners to shovel sidewalks, and there is no enforcement mechanism or associated fine schedule. This makes it difficult for staff to respond effectively to complaints. In order to address council concerns, staff recommends adoption of an ordinance that requires property owners to shovel snow on adjacent sidewalks abutting their property within 48 hours after a snowstorm, and will be incorporated into Chapter 220 of Mission's Municipal Code, which deals with nuisances. The proposed ordinance includes a no-fee courtesy notice that will be sent to properties in violation. By passing this ordinance, staff is provided with opportunities to require private property owners to complete the snow removal, thereby alleviating the need for the city to dedicate limited staff's resources to this purpose. Mayor, I move the city council approve the ordinance adopting requirements for keeping public sidewalks free of snow and ice within 48 hours after a snowfall.
Second.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I just did want, I did want to note that Ken and I did receive response from one constituent on tonight's action item. They just had some concern about people who are gone all winter and how they would manage this, and that it could be expensive to have a service, but they didn't really weigh in one way or the another, one way or the other, on whether we should move forward. But they just wanted to flag that as a potential concern.
Right. Any other comments or discussion? Yes, Ken.
May. Yes, I just want to say I appreciate the work that staff has done in bringing this forward. This was actually initiated by a local resident in Ward 4, who had concerns about the safety of the sidewalks along Lamar and all. And I appreciate the fact that this should at least address some of those concerns. Thank you.
I have a quick question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Hillary.
And could you just highlight really quickly the communication forms that we're going to take to make sure we communicate with residents about this change? And I guess that question's pointed to Laura or Celia.
So we will be, there's a current issue of the Mission Magazine, which will have about a full page in the newsletter section that is dedicated to the new ordinance and those requirements. So that will be kind of our blanket. We've been talking internally about the most effective method, because as you know, we don't have sidewalks that serve all of, quite honestly, the majority of the residences in our community. And so, looking at how best to sort of get that notice, whether that's a direct mail to streets where there are sidewalks, we've also then been talking about perhaps better and more effective communication with our businesses if we do that on a more personal basis. So several things in the works, and as we get that information communicated out, we'll continue to share the ways we're doing that. Thank you.
Anybody else have a comment or a question? All right. Seeing none. Audrey, please call for the vote.
Flora.
I.
Inman.
I.
Crane.
I.
Bolton House.
I.
Rothrock.
I.
Sashmacher.
I.
Davis.
I.
And Thomas.
I.
Motion carry. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We do have one additional item tonight. Item 7C, FCIP consultant selection. In July 2019, the Community Development Committee directed staff to move forward with the Facility Conservation Improvement Program, or FCIP, offered by the Kansas Corporation Commission, KCC, as a way to achieve energy conservation through energy performance contracts. Cities can take advantage of the program's single procurement energy performance contracts that include the cost of an energy audit, or sorry, energy study, audit, improvement, or equipment design, and costs associated with the implementation of approved improvements. Energy performance contracting guarantees energy savings, and if the savings are not achieved, the Energy Service Company, or ESCO, reimburses the city the difference. In October, a review group met consisting of two council members, a member of the Sustainability Commission, a member from the Planning Commission, and four city staff members to consider the qualifications of three firms which had addressed the city's energy demands. The result was the recommendation to pursue an investment-grade audit with Control Technology and Solutions LLC, or CTS Group. This audit will include a detailed analysis of the energy needs of the city and the anticipated cost of upgrading or replacing various equipment in each building. The audit will also weigh the benefits of converting the streetlights not yet using LED lighting. Each element included in the eventual contract and project will be evaluated by the ESCO, the project team, city council, and the Sustainability Commission. The audit will include engineering and construction services, and will be comprehensive in fee for service, the administrative fee owed to the state, and the monitoring of the improvements for a minimum of three years following installation. Mayor, I move the city council approve the authorization of staff to formally enter into the Facility Conservation Improvement Program, FCIP, and solicit an investment-grade audit with Control Technology and Solutions LLC.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Questions or discussion?
I would just say that the process to review the different vendors that we looked into was really thorough. I'm glad I got to participate in it. There were a few of us on that committee, and we talked to a few different vendors, and I thought they all were pretty good and had some great services to provide. But CTS really did seem to kind of rise to the top there, and I'm really looking forward to this. I think it's going to be a great step for the city to not just save us some money, but also save some energy and reduce some of that footprint. So looking forward to seeing how this audit goes and what other future steps we can take.
Sally, Ben, Debbie.
Yeah, thank you. I was hoping that maybe Emily could briefly explain for any members of the public how the cost savings are guaranteed, or how this would only involve, you know, improvements that are, have a cost saving.
Sure. The process is very, very thorough to evaluate our current costs that we spend, both through energy use and billing for the energy use, and then also for any kind of maintenance, et cetera. So the useful life of the equipment is evaluated and so forth. So you assume that going forward, we have budgeted that type of expense for the years of the use of the equipment. You apply that kind of budgeting forward, you bundle all of the savings, and then use that budgeted amount to pay down whatever you have invested in the improvements. So the penciling, so to speak, is an elaborate process to evaluate all of those costs to the city. Some things may have a very quick return, and some may have a longer return. Those are balanced. So the benefit of bundling them all together is that you can make some improvements that may have a really high value to the community for one reason or the other, with something that has a just pure fiscal benefit. And that work of creating that package is done by our ESCO, and Ellie Blankenship is here from CTS Group to back me up on any answers of questions. And then it's further evaluated before we sign anything to any kind of payback guarantee. Our third party at the state, Kansas Corporation Commission, will be evaluating that to the nth degree, so that the signings, as you will, will guarantee that savings and that protection to the city. So that will be evaluated further.
Great. Thank you.
All right, Debbie.
I would just add that during the three-year process and toward the end of that, that we continue looking at environmental strides and continue to have city participation in applying for grants through Department of Energy and the Environmental Protection Agency, because that will be an ongoing sustainable practice for us in getting money to support our environmental efforts.
Anybody else?
This is Ellie Blankenship with CTS.
Yes, Ellie.
I just wanted to say that we're really looking forward to working with you guys, and we're excited about the project. And yeah, I mean, you actually have to guarantee as part of the legislation in the FCIP program, the savings. So that three-year measurement, we actually have pretty extensive process that we have to go through to measure and verify the savings. And if we fall short, we actually have to write a check for the difference. So that's just something that I wanted to add in there as well.
All right. Anybody else? Ken?
Yes, the other comment that I wanted to make is that the investment level audit is being conducted at no cost to the city, which is unusual, and we really appreciate the fact that this group has decided to do this.
All right. Anybody else? Hearing none. Audrey, please call for the vote.
Bolton House.
I.
Rothrock.
I.
Crane.
I.
Inman.
I.
Thomas.
I.
Flora.
I.
Sashmacher.
I.
And Davis.
I.
Motion carry. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, that concludes my committee report.
All right. Thank you. Then we'll move on to item eight, unfinished business. We do not have any. So under item nine, new business, we don't have any items under new business this evening. So we'll move on to item 10, which is comments from the city council. This is an opportunity for comments from our council members. Does anybody have anything they would like to share?
Mr. Mayor, this is Kristen.
Yes, Kristen.
We had our Broadmore Task Force earlier this month, and we had great participation. And I just wanted to thank Penn. He did a fantastic job of leading our group, and I think everybody's going to be very happy. We've got some exciting things on the horizon for Broadmore. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Mayor, I had a question.
Yes, Ken.
Once these ordinances, ordinances are passed, how long does it take to have them included in the city code book on the website?
Laura, do you want to handle that?
I can. And I don't know if Audrey's been able to determine that, but I think that was one of those things that that we may have shifted a little bit, and we lost sight of in the transition of the city clerk's position. You have someone in that position for a long time, and those things happen more automatically. And so, we've just had some recent conversations in follow-up to your questions, Councilmember Davis, about that. So we will be bundling, sending that information off to our code provider, and making sure we're kind of getting back into the cycle of those more frequent updates.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, I have a comment.
Yes. Yes, Hillary.
Thank you. I just wanted to say happy birthday to our city administrator, Laura Smith, and I hope that you find a special way to celebrate despite the world.
This meeting isn't special enough?
Happy birthday, Laura.
Darn it. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
All right. Anybody else? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to item 11, mayor's report. And other than the birthday wishes, I had nothing to report. Item 12, city administrators' report. Ms. Smith, would you please, I know we're not going to have financials this evening, or financials, as it delayed. Anything else you would like to share?
I do have a list, and I'm sorry, Mayor, I was trying to read Councilmember Crane's information in the chat box. When you had a question about a constituent call after watching Channel 5 News, that would like to know where the easement begins and ends near Don Chilito's property, in case they want to protest. We'll have to take a look at that and determine where the, whether there's a public sidewalk or where that location would be. So we can certainly follow up with you on that, Councilmember. Yes, and my apologies, that's, we've had with the new public health orders, it's just been a little bit of a crazy week or week and a half. And so I am behind on my October interim financials, but I will get those up at the end of the week. A couple of other things, just a reminder, that City Hall is going to be closed for the Thanksgiving holiday. Not that we have a lot of visitors now, but we will be closed to the public on Thursday and Friday. Following some, the newly published or adopted health orders by Johnson County, we've been meeting internally, and we'll be moving all of our holiday celebrations and community gatherings kind of to the virtual platform at this point. We don't feel, even with some of the outdoor activities, that we can deliver those things as safely as we would like. So we've got a few things up our sleeve that we hope can still bring some cheer over the holidays for everyone. But keeping our community healthy and safe is certainly our number one priority. Along with that, we will be doing the Pearl Harbor Remembrance Event virtually this year. So that event will begin at 11:30 on Monday, December 7th. So you can certainly log in via Zoom to participate in that, if you will. Next week, we will be preparing and distributing our Thanksgiving baskets to our holiday families. But it's hard to believe it's that time of year already, and we're ready to do that. Lots of changes in that holiday adoption program this year, both in terms of how we're coordinating volunteers to maintain appropriate and safe physical distancing and masking requirements, along with delivery options for participants in the program. So commend Director Almany and his family adoption committee for the steps that they've taken so far. And I don't know, he, I haven't heard the final number. So I think this morning when we were talking, Penn wasn't sure of the final number of families that we will be serving at Thanksgiving. So if he has that, he can certainly feel free to chime in. We are certainly in the midst of fundraising for the rest of the holiday adoption program. Tags will be going up on a tree at the community center, not lining the hallways, but a tree at the community center and a tree at City Hall. If you are interested in taking tags to purchase gifts, we will also have volunteers that will be happy who want to make a donation to do some of that shopping for you. The uplift truck, who collects items for the homeless, will be at the Powell Community Center tomorrow morning from 8:00 a.m. to noon. So if you have blankets, clothing items, I think there's a list of items that they're accepting available on our website. Please feel free to stop by and drop that off. And then, just a reminder for anyone in the public who might be interested, we will be be having kind of our in-depth discussion about Mission Bowl and Sunflower Development Group requests for Tiffin Centives at our December 2nd Finance and Administration Committee meeting. And then we are still on track to be conducting the public hearings for that project at the December 16th City Council meeting. So I think that concludes my report, and so, Penn, do you know the number of families? I'll take a breath, and you can throw that number in.
I do, we'll be serving 82 families this Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
The need is, is certainly rampant throughout the community. We've had a fair amount of, of positive energy and support from residents and our neighbors, and so we're, we're excited to be able to offer this again this year.
That concludes your report, Laura.
Debbie?
Thank you.
Question? I just ask, on the Pearl Harbor day, December 7th, that we're holding that, what time is that virtual meeting?
It, you will, the Zoom call will start at 11:30.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes item number 12. We'll move on to item 13, executive session, and we do not have a need for an executive session this evening. So we'll move on to adjournment, adjournment. Before we adjourn tonight, I do want to share with the public that the video from this meeting will be available through a link on our website, missionks.org. There being no further business tonight, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right. There's a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, good night, everybody.
Good night.